All right, order please. Good evening one and all, and welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the town council for September 6th, 2007. The first step to be taken is to call the closed meeting to an end, and directives have been given out. Be it resolved that the in-camera meeting be adjourned so that we may return to attending the regular meeting. All those in favor? Carry it. Thank you. Any announcements at this point? No announcements? That's fine. Let's go on now to question period. If anyone has any questions to ask, you have three minutes allowed to you. Step forward to the mic and please, if you have any questions, now's the time to do it. You have three minutes, and give your name and your address, then you can ask your question or questions. Good evening. My name is Stephane Lalonde, 72 Landry Street. Yes, good evening, members of council, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make you aware of information that obtained concerning DMS. Well, this is a question period, Monsieur Lalonde. This is not an MDS-related announcement. This is not a presentation. It's a question period. If you have any questions, that's fine, but we're not here to hear any presentations. Mrs. Weller, well, if he has something to comment on, something that's on the agenda, he can do so. He has the right to make comments. What comments? Well, firstly, we're not against a project being built behind residences that are currently in existence. However, bylaws must be respected to ensure the well-being of everyone. You've received DMS-related emails, and I have the copy of the information with regards to Clarence Rockland. I believe we all received this particular information. So it specifies the following: "New land use, including the creation of lots and expanding livestock facilities, shall comply with the minimum distance as set out in the MDS formula." Last time, it was said it was only a guideline, so all of the laws and the policy and the existing policies specify... Well, it's not a law. Well, it's a bylaw. It's a bylaw, Mr. Mayor, and that's from the Clarence and Rockland municipality. I also have the same thing from the Prescott-Russell county. So, "New and used, creation of new lots and new expanding livestock facilities shall comply with the minimum distance facilities," or separation, and the MDS form will apply through existing, through building permits of existing lots. Minor variances with regard to MDS specifications can be varied with regards to specifications. It is a guideline and could not be necessarily followed. I just want to make sure. And I also have the provincial policy statement that I can read to you, which also states, "Policy 1.1.3.8: Authorities may identify areas or approve," where it has been demonstrated where the new settlement area is in compliance with the new minimum distance formula. It also states a little later that rural areas and municipalities, "Policy 1.4.9: New land use, including creation of lots, expanding livestock areas, shall comply with the minimum distance formula." Same thing again, and I could go on and on. I can hand you this document. It's the provincial policy statement. So based on these facts, Mr. Mayor, where does it say that it's only a guideline that needs to be followed? That's only a question? Sir, you're the individual that stated that it was only a guideline, that it was not necessarily, that it didn't necessarily need to be enforced, and that's my first question. Yeah. I think that the staff report on this is quite clear as to what our position was. We recommended, I guess, the results of the MDS study be supported, but I've had discussions with Ministry of officials and the like, and they indicated that they are hopeful that the city would follow the recommendations of the MDS study. But there was an ability for council to assess that study and determine whether they wanted to impose it in part or in full, and where is that written? Well, sir, let Mr. Darch finish. It's a discussion that I had with one of their senior officials. They indicated that they weren't necessarily going to police the matter. They strongly encourage the council to follow the results of the NDS study. I'm paraphrasing a discussion that I had in Toronto several months ago on this issue. In other words, council is the final decision. Yes, council can make its decision. I think that council was made aware of what the policy statement was, what the objectives were. It's clearly dealing with odor. I think we've had a number of discussions, discussions on this about the pros and cons of this, and ultimately, council elected to weigh their requirements of freezing the development funds on lots that would be captured by MDS. Mr. Zant?
I wasn't here at the last meeting when the majority of the conversations were happening, but to me, it seems to me quite clear that even if it is a bylaw, that's what we do here. We approve bylaws, we change bylaws, we eliminate bylaws. That's what we do. So whether it's a guideline or a bylaw, to us, it doesn't matter. If we choose to go in a direction, we're going to do it. In another direction, we're going to do that as well. I completely understand where you guys are coming from. You bought houses, you want to stare at the back of your backyards with trees for the rest of your life, and that's fine, but our position is it has to be a win-win situation between what is reasonable for a citizen to request and what is also reasonable for a developer who purchased land who wants to develop. I understand that that was a consensus, and I was spoken up on this at the last meeting if I was here, but what I would prefer to do was to grandfather it into the MDS that was applicable when they purchased the land, which last time I looked was approximately 350 feet, which wouldn't even touch their land in any event. So if you would have purchased your land 10 years ago, you couldn't have a single say about that building. It just so happens that now they changed it and they made it go that much further. To go towards what Mr. Levaire has said with regard to planning, that the smell, the odor, will not stop at that line. You guys even said it's going to produce odor, but we're talking about producing here. But you're asking the MDS, you're talking about smell for one thing, but it has nothing to do that you live there because you smell this all the time. Your goal is to stop the development. No, I'm not against this. You had said that earlier, and you had spoken, sir, I can't recall your name. I didn't say that we wanted to stop the development. You said that you were against the development. I stated that we are not against this. Three minutes, the three-minute time constraint is up. I'd just like to say that I understand what you're going through, but there's no way that we here are going to say that we're going to stop the development that could potentially feed over 10 years, millions of dollars of tax revenue to the city based on the fact that you wanted to make sure that you see trees in your backyard. You should see what happened in my backyard. It's not pretty, but it's a question of going against the law, the law, based upon thoughts behind the provincial policy. No. Based upon what I've seen, I've read on the website, it's a guideline. The guidelines are there to help municipality determine the distance, but council is the authority that decides. The buck stops here. So the law does not apply? Is that what you mean? Sir, we make the bylaws, you see. This is where it stops. Well, I read the bylaw. Yes. So you guys are applying an amendment to only this project or any... Well, we change bylaws all the time. There are bylaws that stipulated 60 kilometers an hour on streets, and we changed the law and, you know, drove it down to 50 kilometers an hour, but there's no higher level that... There's a higher level that states that you need to comply to a certain policy. That's the thing. I want to make sure that every councillor is aware that currently, the provincial policy is stating that you shall comply to MDS provisions. Are you sure of that? Well, I just want to make sure that every councillor is aware of this. We are, we were all sent emails, and we know exactly. Well, if possible, I'm just asking that this vote be recorded. Well, that's not up to you, but that's not up to you, but that's fine. Any other questions then? 72 Landry, you'll have to repeat your name. Keith Langedock, 672 Landry. Did you get that? Yes. So I get where you guys are coming from, and I think that Stephane and us have presented a clear-cut case as to what respecting and underlining guidelines and the consequences they might have. There are examples, and to quote somebody that I may have to use in the future, there are examples of MDS being reduced to a specific line, lot, allotted area that have backfired for the municipalities. So the OMA-FRA has given me some of those feedbacks as to what has happened to those municipalities once they have reduced to reduce the setbacks, which could lead and be up to putting and paying out of the municipalities' pockets or pocket to put up or plant new trees, put up barriers and such. You can get where I'm going to with this. Now, the basic concern I have with that is this, the difference, I'm sorry, with regards to planners, other than the one for this current area, and I had the opportunity to talk to OEB and FRA engineers. Now, the reduction that is being asked for in this specific scenario is unheard of. So the way it was described, the way in which a reduction happens is to adhere to one or two properties in order for someone to build. We're looking for at 25 to 30 meters. The average reduction is under 100 meters. What you're asking for is a 290% reduction, which is 527 meters, a half-kilometer reduction. This would be the first time that something like this has ever been done anywhere. Second to that, when I spoke to the engineer about the actual reduction, he laughed and he said, "It's not meant for that. These things are to be respected up to a certain degree, but that, quote-unquote, is outrageous." As Mr. Darch stated, he had these people that he spoke to in Toronto, and, but so did I, and the feedback that I got is that the decision that has been made to reduce it by that amount will come with consequences. The amount of nuisance firstly, that you will, nuisance complaints will be dramatic. No law-abiding citizens will not look at 200 or 300 paragraphs included in that. I wish they would have hired their lawyer and realized that they have purchased their property in a current MDS location. Maybe their lawyer could have looked into that. Well, the point being is this, when it comes to the actual reduction that you're getting at, I get it. A few meters, 50 meters, you're talking hundreds of meters here just so somebody can build instead of 97 lots, 82 lots, and the quote that was made last time, "Well, if I can't, you know, build those things, I'm going to take my stuff home," and that, who does that? Well, I don't remember hearing that. He stated up here in the podium, "It's not in our best interests. We will pull the projects if we can't, if we can't build those eight lots in an L-shaped configuration." That was one thing. We were told one thing, and then we come to council, and everybody changed exactly what was said to us over the phone. The point is, when we're looking at what those reductions are, yes, we're, I get it. We're not against the development, and I'm on record saying I'm not against the development. I'm against the development in the guidelineed area from all respects. With regard to everything that we talked to, needs to be or shall be or is required to be followed. So that's what it is. I know you're saying, I guess you're referring to the development. You seem to be trying to come up with a way to stop it either way. When I spoke to Mr. Lalonde yesterday, he agreed. He said that if we create a buffer behind the eastern property line, a small buffer with these developers, then that would satisfy both parties. Would that satisfy you? We've had that meeting with the state's builders, and nothing came of that. None of that stuff that we asked for was agreed to, but if you're saying that they're not able to satisfy you... No, 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 that, not saying that, you're putting words into my mouth. Well, we can't discuss this on behalf of space builders, unfortunately. Your three minutes are up if you have a last comment. Well, yes, with all of these things that we've presented and all of this work that blue worker, blue-collar workers have put in there, how, with all of the efforts we've put in, how can this be so easily dismissed? Well, it's not so easily dismissed. By the way, all of these workers involved have part-time jobs. Secondly, will the meters involved definitely stop the smell? It definitely would. No. Sir, we smell it on Clark Street. Are you guys expert? Well, to have, to be an expert, you need to have a nose, and that's it. If you cut down all of the trees, of course, it's going to smell more, but guys, again, you can hammer the nail any way you want. It comes down to the actual reduction that's being proposed. It's an unheard-of reduction, and that is stated from other rural planners and an actual OMA-FRA engineer. If we had to stop developments, I'm just playing devil's advocate. If we stopped developments every single time we came within a farm area, there would be nothing built beyond town lines of Rockland here. This is asking to respect the guidelines and bylaws that have been put in place to prevent future costs to you guys. That's what it is. No, it's not, sir. Well, thank you, sir. Thank you for the point you've made. Any other questions? Are there any other questions? Thank you then. Next item, resolution presented by Charles Belleguet, resolution concerning hirings. Go ahead, Mr. Belleguet. Whereas, we need to examine and approve in the coming months, reports submitted up to now that will allow the implementation of projects and to balance out the budget, and whereas the city has considerably increased its staff with regards to the demographic growth that has given rise to a substantial increase in the total budget. Resolved that a hiring freeze of recruits on a part-time and a part-time basis, with exception of those existing employees, and be it also resolved that each department head make an assessment of its needs with regards to personnel and exploitation costs and take a look at reduction, a potential reduction of costs that can be implemented in coming budgets, and be it also really resolved that this be implemented to help finance those budgets that have been approved up to now by the budget director. Question. Mr. Mayor, we cannot approve a new position unless it has been approved through the budgetary process and by council as a whole. Each and every department head is asked to go through this assessment at the end of the year each and every time. I don't see the need for this motion per se. It doesn't change anything really in the way in which we do business. Well, it's directed towards showing up the second point made in this resolution. I'm asking that each department head, each and every time that we visit the budget, they always ask us what they wish to add on to their department. You know, they're asking for additional staff all the time. That's why we negotiate the budget. Now, we're called upon to come up with cuts here, there, and everywhere. What I'm asking department heads is to take a look in the future before to determine their future, future needs. Well, sir, they do this each and every year. You'll see, when you go through this for about three to five days, they go through this process for about three to five days, and it's, it's, you know, well, be it, it's part of the, it's an integral part of the budgetary process. We can still accept or entertain this resolution. Let's go on now to consent items. Are there any items that you wish to withdraw? Any items whatsoever? If not, let's go on. Could you please read the consent items? If my computer allows me to do so. Well, you're close as home, Mrs. Weller, however. I do have the English version of our minutes. Be it resolved that the following items, as identified under consent items of the regular meeting, be adopted. 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. A committee of the whole of August the 9th. B, regular council meeting of August 9th. C, committee of the whole of August 21st. And D, regular council meeting of August 21st. Those are the minutes. Am I reading the right ones so far? Fine. 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. A, committee of the adjustment meeting of 2 June 21st, 2017. 10.3, the following recommendations from committee of the whole of August 21st, 2017. 10.3A, resolution to approve an amendment to the financial assistance program for culture and arts. B, resolution to approve the interior ice rink and slab rental policy. C, resolution to give a mandate to staff in regards to the assessment of the suitability of buildings. Jean-Marc Lalonde Arena, Community Services Garage. D, resolution to approve the draft plan of subdivision for block 56. E, resolution to approve preliminary engineering work for Le Gas Road. And F, adoption of a resolution to request that the United Counties of Prescott and Russell enter into a cost-sharing maintenance agreement for Edward Street Drainage Culver, seconded by councillor Sima. All those in favor? Carry it then. Thank you. Let's go on now to item 11.1, implementation strategy and timing for the master fire plan as amended. Councillor Lalonde, Andre, that AMO that the remor 2017-013 with regards to the implementation strategy and timing for the master plan be received, and that we start implementing the master fire plan in keeping with the implementation strategy contained in report 2017-013, and be it resolved that those recommendations contained in the said recommendation be subject to financing, subject to further consent given by council during the course of the 2018 budgetary year, seconded by councillor Sima. Any questions? None? All those in favor? Carry it then. Thank you. Item 11.2, amendment to conditions of draft plan approval, Trillium subdivision. Councillor Belleguet, I have this in English before me, or in French, whatever. Be it resolved that council approves amendments to conditions of draft plan approval, approved by council on April the 3rd, 2017, for the Trillium subdivision. Then the site lot agreement stipulates that a document be registered under title, registered through DMS, and that exemption be approved with regard to DMS, one that the developer demonstrate through their site lot plan that there will be a buffer zone to be built along properties on Landry Street made up of trees, and that this buffer zone will be built additional to council approval. Fine. I can write down further that this is subject to further approval by council, Mr. Mayor, to clear up matters. Fine. Seconded by councillor Levaire. Any questions?
I'd just like to clarify this particular matter. For the gentleman that was speaking before, that there was a condition that developer demonstrates on the landscaping plan, on buffer zone along the back of properties on Landry Street, and that plan will be approved by council and will have to be satisfactory to all parties. Along the side as well. Yes, along the back of that property, the east boundary, and then it turns to Landry, right?
That's right. Yes, that's right. And then it turns towards Landry. Well, it's up to developer to develop this plan, and he will submit it to us, and we'll have to approve it. We will look at it, it will be put into the landscaping plan, it will be brought to the city after. You have to realize there's a fish habitat at the back, so the study requires something. It's hard to say we're going to have to put in a buffer or anything like that. That's why it's going to come back to council to be approved later on, after we consider and see what all these studies will come up with. Don't forget that there are 98 conditions left to fill out with regards to this, so there are a lot of studies to be completed yet, and that will be approved by council afterwards. So buffer zone on the back after, where there are trees. Yes, that's fine. Has this been approved, Mr. Mayor? Well, it was moved by councillor Levaire. Fine. All those in favor? All right, I'd just like to make a comment. Mr. Mayor, it's regrettable. I'm in favor of development definitively, but in this case, owing that this recommendation stems from our urban planner and a recommendation from the United Counties of Prescott-Russell's urban planner to ensure protection of the municipality as a whole, I will accept the Association of Municipalities of Ontario decision if it's heard by the AMO, but in this case, I cannot vote in favor of this particular resolution as it stands. Are you asking for a registered vote or not? No, I don't believe any registered, or registered vote was called for. Who's in favor? Carry it then. Who's in favor of the resolution? Carry it then. That's fine. Let's go on. Bylaws. Are there any bylaws you wish to withdraw from the list of bylaws? 12.10 and 12.11, Mr. Mayor. Any other bylaws you wish to withdraw from the list? That's it. Mr. Lalonde, would you care to read this, please? Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always get the easy ones. Be it resolved that the following bylaws be adopted. 12.1, 2017-101, modification to the zoning bylaw with regards to Trillium. 12.2, 2017-105, Cobb's Lake municipal drain. 12.2, do you want to withdraw also 12.12? Yes, we'd like to withdraw 12.12 also. Don't read the last three bylaws. Well, that's fine. Let's come up, let's come up with a decision, shall we? All right. 12.3, 2017-106, Le Page municipal drain. 12.4, 2017-107, the Marcel Valiquette municipal drain. 12.5, 2017-0108, Bucia municipal drain. 2017-109, A Vinnet municipal drain. 2017-110, Clarence Creek Outlet municipal drain. 2017-111, Paul Seguin Main municipal drain. Two thousand and seventeen dash one eleven, Paul Seguin Main Municipal Drain. Item twelve point nine, two thousand and seventeen dash one twelve, Louis LaFleur Municipal Drain. Twelve point ten? Nope, no, we don't, we jump off over to twelve point thirteen. Bylaw two thousand and seventeen dash one eighteen, to dedicate as public highway parts three and four of Plan fifty R dash seventy-five nine nine Sterling Avenue, seconded by councillor Levaire. All those in favor then? Carried. Thank you. Councillor Lalonde, you wish to address item twelve point ten? Yes, for discussion purposes. Be it resolved that town council accepts that T V C twenty-two occupy the venue of the first floor for the Rockland Arts Council from this point on until the thirty-first of December, two thousand and nineteen? And that members of the city of Clarence and Rockland sit on the board of directors. T V C twenty-two is a nonprofit organization, is a community autonomous, uh, community TV station that produces TV stations. Do I have to read the rest? Do I? No, fine. Well, I need someone to second this particular resolution to the effect that they will be occupying the first level of the arts and culture building situated here in Rockland, seconded by councillor Berlinguet. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the following statement. I'm definitely in favor of T V C twenty-two. I've always been in favor of what they're doing, but when this particular building was built by the tennis club many years ago, the tennis went down in popularity, the tennis activities went down. But more and more, even on TV, on many occasions this weekend, we were told that tennis will become even more popular than minor hockey and that at present, if ever tennis activities increase, there's someone that lives in Rockland that is an employee of Tennis Canada and I don't know if last year she consulted with Mr. Bouchet. She wanted to start up tennis activities here in Rockland. Now, if we leave this pavilion for the next ten years to T V C twenty-two, what's going to happen with our tennis aficionados? We paid huge sums last year to repave all three tenants' courts. If we could maybe hand this venue over to the T V C twenty-two folks for about three years, renewable under further agreement with the municipality. That's the point I wanted to raise with you. Because at present, Mr. Mayor, T V C twenty-two is a nonprofit organization, maybe as it is alleged, but each and every meeting we need to pay twenty C. T V C twenty-two, one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars to put our shows on air. Two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars that are paid to T V C twenty-two on a monthly basis. Those who wish to advertise on T V C twenty-two, twenty-two are called upon to pay a fee. I know it's a minimal fee, but still, this organization, there are other organizations, there are many other organizations in Rockland that pay rent when they, I'm thinking of the Optimist Club that occupy the basement of that building, that are, that is called upon to pay a certain amount. I'm entirely in agreement with you, Mr. Lalonde. However, my report identified that we will be saving six thousand dollars worth of operational costs per year by leaving this venue to T V C twenty-two because they'll be paying for all electrical and heating fees. In the official report, it does state the municipality will have savings of ten thousand dollars per year because fees incurred by the municipality at present will be incurred by T V C twenty-two. However, with regard to the ten-year lifetime contract, it was subject to their request and we exceeded to their request and we came up with a similar recommendation to council. Within the agreement, there's a clause that stipulates that the city of Clarence and Rockland reserves the right to terminate the agreement given a, an advance notice of sixty days. If the city of Clarence and Rockland says that tomorrow morning we want to take over these, this venue, we have the opportunity with respect because if they wish to move, they have huge moving costs to, and that they will incur. We spoke of this at our last meeting and the lady in charge stated that they wish to invest over and above forty thousand dollars. Yes, forty thousand dollars. That's why they want to come up with a long-term agreement. However, I told her that we could not guarantee that we would never have the right to take back this venue. Could we accommodate tennis services in that same building that will be occupied by T V C twenty-two? No, no, I do not believe so because T V C twenty-two will occupy the majority of floor space on the first floor. Well, we could come up with an arrangement similar to what we have with the arena. Well, I cannot speak on behalf of T V C twenty-two, but however, I do know that if we reduce this to a three-year period, I'm not convinced that they'll be investing in forty thousand dollars. The reason they want to enter into a ten-year agreement is that they can apply for grants and so on and so forth. Well, we can house the tennis folks at the arena. Could we not then? For example, if there was a tennis-related committee that would start up, we could house them. House these good folks. Well, it would be better to accommodate them at, in that venue that is now, it will be occupied by T V C twenty-two. Well, I'm in agreement with you, councillor Lalonde. If tennis activities would come back with a vengeance, would revive, be revised with a vengeance. Well, I've been with the city since nineteen ninety-eight and tennis activities went down to, you know, was tapered down to a trickle and was mostly looked upon as free space. It was occupied at one time by a youngsters' meeting place. Well, we assume that the tennis activities will be subject to increased activities. But I'm in agreement with Mr. Lalonde. Even if we can give them a sixty-day advance notice, I would like that the contract be begged at a three-to-five-year period. It is a city building, so we have to be careful as to how we manage this. Well, you see, the tennis, tennis activities were quite popular. We had maybe six thousand population at that point in time. Today, we're talking about over and above fifteen thousand population here in Rockland and it's ever increasing. I'm convinced that tennis activities, based upon what we've seen on TV, as they've stated this weekend on many occasions on CBC and RDS and T S N, that tennis has become an, uh, sport that has become ever more popular. I'd noticed that eleven o'clock on Saturday or on Friday that all four carts were being utilized by adults that were playing tennis there. Also, Mr. Mayor, when will they be moving into the new building? What we call the new pavilion? Well, next year. If we continue to pay for their phone fees, well, their phone, they're associated with Videotron. T V C twenty-two is associated with Videotron. Firstly, we have no phone fees. It states here that we're called upon to pay for phone, cable, and internet services. No, they're called upon to pay for this. No. What's written here? Well, T V C twenty-two assumes associate costs. Well, costs associated will be, with those items will be assumed as of January two thousand and eighteen. But there are no phone lines at present there that are owned by the municipality. But T V C twenty-two, well, as soon as they occupy the building, they'll be called upon to pay for phone, phone fees. Well, it states that as of two thousand and nineteen, they'll be assuming all fees with regards to their operation. Yes, but what, uh, will happen until two thousand and nine, two thousand and nineteen? Yes, well, with regards to the transition year, there, there, there's a lot to be done with regards to transitioning into that building before physically moving into that building. Even if you had a ten-year agreement, the clause still states, this provision still states that we can give them a sixty-day advance notice. Well, that's fine, but if we want to respect that provision, we, I have no contention with regard to that. You're right, but realistically, when they've invested so heavily in that, do we wish to, you know, get involved three years hence and say, well, we want you to move? This is what I'm doing. Well, you know, we can, we don't know what the future holds for these good folks, but you know, ten-year contracts for a municipality involving a municipality as a rule, you know, we negotiate with our unionized folks for no more than a four-year period and now we're entering into a ten-year contract? Look, we still have a sixty-day advance notice clause. If council asks me to ask T V C twenty-two folks if they're comfortable with a reduced contract, that's fine. If not, we'll just put an end to it. If they're at ease with a reduced contract, let's, I can come back with a revised, uh, bylaw. It depends on what they're feeling with, about this is. Well, the point I'd like to make, Mr. Boucher, is this. At present, there's a sixty-day provision that allows us to give them advance notice, but they need also protection. If we tell them that we give them permission today and we'll be canceling this after sixty days advance notice, we, I'm entirely in agreement with you during the course of my discussions with them. That's the one that they were scared away from. However, we impose the same conditions with the Echo Spéple folks in Bourget, but we stated that if we needed facilities with regards to that building, let's say, on an emergency basis or for whatever reason, then we would, we would have a right to take back facilities within that building. But I would hope that council would be more receptive to their concerns, more amenable to their concerns. Well, we have a guarantee of ten years, but after three years within that ten years, we have the right to ask them to vacate with, given an advance notice of sixty days. Well, let's just submit it to the T V C twenty-two folks and see what they wish to come up with. So we'll defer item twelve point ten. Let's go on to item twelve point eleven. Mr. Mayor, I'd asked that this be withdrawn and I'd written an explanatory note regarding to my intent to withdraw this. Yes, so we're withdrawing item twelve, twelve point ten, we're deferring this. Well, whereas section four seventeen, oblique one of the municipal act two thousand and one, S O two thousand and one, as amended, provides for the establishment and/or maintenance of a reserve fund for any purpose for which the council has the authority to spend money and whereas on June the fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, the municipal council of the city of Clarence and Rockland created a reserve fund for the maintenance and the construction of the roadway within the city of Clarence and Rockland. Now, therefore, that the corporation of the city of Clarence and Rockland hereby authorize that an amount of twenty thousand dollars be taken from the maintenance and reconstruction of roads reserve fund for the preliminary engineering work required for La Casa Road. That's it. So that was the bylaws. So why did you pull it out from the role of usually adopted bylaws? Well, uh, well, all those in favor? Seconded by councillor Zant? All those in favor then? Fine, fine. Item twelve point twelve, Mr. Berlinguet, be it resolved? Be it resolved? Bylaw number two thousand and seventeen dash one seventeen, to authorize a signature of a collective agreement with I A F F be adopted. Yes? Now, you withdrew that for further discussion? Did someone dis- second this particular bylaw or resolution leading to a bylaw? Yes, seconded by Mrs. Sima. My question is this. We use volunteer firefighters and full-time firefighters. Now, this agreement deals with full-time firefighters. Now, we took the trouble of inserting a letter of understanding for the use of volunteer firefighters in all of this. I don't need to read the whole of the letter, but the letter essentially states, if I understand correctly, that we can use volunteer fighters as relief firefighters where full, full-time firefighters are absent only. That's the only reference to volunteer firefighters in this agreement. So it begs the following question. Where does it say here that we continue to use volunteer firefighters as a complementary force to full-time firefighters and that they can be dispatched alongside them? From what I can read, it seems to indicate that we can only use volunteer firefighters when there are no full-time firefighters in place. Fine. Well, you see, the recognition of part-time firefighters or the use of part-time firefighters is already covered in the, well, it's a pre-established practice in the city of Clarence and Rockland to use both full-time and part-time firefighters. So the negotiation of this agreement, this agreement is intended to cover the working conditions of the full-time firefighters, covered by that association only. It does not extend or otherwise discuss or allow coverage of part-time firefighters that are under a separate agreement. But we did, we added a letter of understanding explaining the conditions where we can use volunteer firefighters, correct? So we're leaving out a legal issue here. Well, I guess to try to explain the question as I understand, the councillor's question as I understand, there was language negotiated in about the restriction or the ability to contract out work. So whatever work is performed by full-time firefighters would normally be contracted out to other bodies. Now, the letter of understanding allows for when a full-time firefighter is temporarily off, that the use of a volunteer firefighter in that capacity during a temporary action, absence be allowed. It's a exception to an otherwise restrictive, uh, element that, so, in other words, if a full-time firefighter is sick or away on holidays where we can. Am I the only one that has concerns with this particular wording? Well, here's how it doesn't worry me. At no point will we actually put the actually, the firefighting services on the backs of two people. Clearly, we'll make use of volunteers, that's why they're here for. Whether it's in fine print or on a contract, I don't think it necessarily worries me. Specifically, this agreement addresses those three members that belong to the I A F F and when entering into negotiations for this agreement, we ask permission that should a full-time firefighter be absent, that we could replace him or her by a volunteer. In no way does it address volunteer firefighters anywhere across the city and that's in our bylaw. And this, our existing bylaw allows municipalities and does state that we make use of volunteer firefighters predominantly. But this schedule that I have in hand delineates the number of volunteer firefighters and that we have. But when we discussed the use of volunteer firefighters, Mr. Wilson was seeking to propose that volunteer firefighters be scheduled for certain blocks of time where they'd be available and I'm saying basically that we cannot do that. Mr. Wilson, if I may, under article two of the collective agreement, it specifically talks about recognition and scope as to what's covered by this collective agreement. It doesn't speak to other employment conditions because other groups are not covered by this agreement. So the scope of this collective agreement pertains to full-time firefighters as sectioned under sections such and such of the EPA. It does not pertain to the other side of this, which is a separate discussion about potential scheduling of on-call people as recommended by the Fire Master Plan. That's a separate discussion that exists with the separate bargaining agent, a club that represents the part-time firefighters. Does that answer your question? So if that answers your question, well, that's fine then. Any other questions? Mr. Wilson, on page twenty-three, section B, no full-time firefighter is covered or covered by this agreement shall be paid off. Can you elaborate on that? What we're talking about here is that the city can't choose to lay off a full-time firefighter to then fill it by a part-time firefighter or volunteer. So the idea behind the letter of understanding pertains to a temporary absence. So if a firefighter is sick or away on vacation or away on course, some temporary absence. The city has The city has the ability to utilize volunteer firefighter to fill in that temporary vacancy. We can't create a vacancy by laying someone off. Any other questions then? All those in favor? Carried then. Thank you. Confirmatory bylaw? Mrs. Sima? Be it resolved that bylaw number two thousand seventeen dash one sixteen being a confirmatory bylaw for all measures and resolutions adopted on the regular meeting of September the sixth be adopted. All those in favor? Thank you. Adjournment called at eight fourteen. Let's take a ten-minute break, and we'll come back for the second meeting afterwards. Thank you.